It is now. Hit it. Good evening, welcome to Hamlet City Council Meeting. This time we'll call the meeting to order. Uh, the first item of business that we have, item number two, would like, at this time, like to proclaim a moment of silence in remembrance of September the eleventh, so if everyone in their own way would bow their heads, thank you. Amen. The, uh... It's good that we do remember these folks, as always has been said about first responders, is, uh, when everybody else is running out there, running in, and, uh... So that's a good thing that we do remember them and remember what happened, and hope that this never happens to us again. Next item on the agenda, council, is the adoption of the agenda. What are your wishes on that?
Uh, Mayor, the only thing I ask is anything where, uh, being, uh, we expected you not to be present tonight, just to omit where it says, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bowie doing, uh, some of the matters to state, uh, the mayor. Other than that, make a motion to adopt this, is with that exception.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Thank you. Counsel, you have before you at this time the minutes of our August fourteenth regular meeting, and you've also had an opportunity to look at the closed session minutes. What are your wishes on those?
So move to approve.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion, changes, deletions? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Thank you. At this time, we come to the portion of our agenda where we allow comments from the attendees, and, uh, the first item that we have been asked to allow tonight is, uh, one that Mr. Bowie has been working on, so I would throw it forward to him.
So I'd like to, uh, welcome Nick Wilks, if he'll come up for us, please. Uh, Nick is here with his mom Julie and his grandmother Carol. Appreciate you guys bringing him out tonight. So Nick did a, um, a lot of artwork for the recent Dancing With The Stars fundraiser for hospice out at the co-auditorium that took place, uh, the other night. And after going and seeing everything he did, I just thought, you know, hey, this is something that's for Richmond County's hospice, and this event took place at co-auditorium, which is in the city of Hamlets. Big event, brought a lot of people out to the co-auditorium for this event, and it's extremely worth recognizing him for the, uh, and as the pictures are going through, showing you the different things, I'll read off just a few things about, uh, Nick. Uh, so he's the son of Julie and Chad Woody and Stephen and Allison Wilks, grandson of Carol Venable and the late Ronnie Venable and Eddie and Peggy Wilks. He grew up and attended schools in Hamlet and is a two thousand seventeen graduate of Richmond Senior High. He's an active member of the Marx Creek Presbyterian Church in Hamlet and appreciates the support of his, uh, church family. He started volunteering for Richmond County Hospice when he was eight years old, serving drinks at the annual barbecue plate sale, and was later named the Richmond County Hospice Teen Volunteer of the Year in two thousand fourteen and Richmond County Hospice Special Events Volunteer in two thousand seventeen. He is now employed part-time with Richmond County Hospice. He enjoys using his artistic talents to create unique and detailed settings for different events, most notably the Richmond County Hospice Taste of the Sand Hill Showcase Dancing With The Stars event the past three years. But also, um, with the, uh, what's, uh, Richmond County Hospice Volunteer Banquet, Richmond County Hospice Forever Tree Lighting Ceremony, the Grief Camp, Marx Creek Presbyterian Church Vacation Bible School for many years, and the Family Halloween Party, and multiple families' Christmas trees assisting with the Chambers Annual Celebration in two thousand eighteen, and assisting with the Richmond Senior High School Prom in seventeen, and assisting decorating the Hamlet Depot in two thousand sixteen. He has aspirations of opening a business using his artistic talents in the future. Certainly hope to see that happen. And, uh, you also have some siblings that I hope to, uh, do the same and follow in your footsteps in some of the things they do, and, you know, everything you do like this, these events, these, that they bring people into the city of Hamlet, so I appreciate that personally. Uh, so hopefully Chase and Trenton Woody, siblings, and Nyla and Noah, uh, Wilks will do the same thing you've been doing. And, and again, I just commend you on the artwork you put together. Uh, inside the coal, when you go in, before you go into the auditorium, there were, uh, basically palaces. What did you make those out of?
The what?
The, the tower, the palaces and all. What was that made of?
Uh, it was all made out of styrofoam.
Okay, and, and they were literally, if you've been in the coal, they were from the floor to the very top of the ceiling. Uh, just extremely detailed work, looked really, really good. You have an opportunity to go to the future events, I, I would go just for the artwork to see things that are done there. So thanks again, Nick.
Thank you.
Nick, I'd just like to say that you are a tremendous asset to the community, and I hope that as time goes along that you'll find something productive to do in Richmond County because people like you are the future. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then the next, uh, presentation we've got is from the Depot, and, uh, we'd ask you to come forward.
Good evening. My name is Bob L. Wanger. I'm a board member, and we've been excited about what we're doing down at the Depot for you. We would like to ask you to be a part of this if you can. Twenty fifteen, the Depot Board decided to take on a project of the Silver Meter Train, which came, that came through Hamlet all these years. We cited on this in twenty sixteen. The company, Scott Mann's Company Rail Three, has built the engine. Engine is a diesel E-eight. It is lighted, comes with full sound capabilities, is painted in the Seaboard mint color scheme. We received the engine in April in twenty seventeen. The engine was seven hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Those engines are no longer available, they are gone. You cannot get them, and they're not planning on making any more of those. A total of seventy-five Silver Meter sets were being produced. In the version that we use, the two-rail version, there are only twenty-five in the world. We own the only one for a museum. Golden Gate, uh, is a company of, this manufacturing the rail cars, and they will be accurate for the nineteen fifty Silver Meter Contest. It, Seaboard had two unique cars. They had the Sun Lounge, and they had the Boat Tale Coach Lounge. The only, only train on the east coast that had any cars like that, factory was just very, very limited to the Seaboard. These cars are all on the set. They'll be lighted, they'll be featured with passengers seated, we'll have tables, chairs, and interiors to all the cars. Delivery is expected in December to January. The cost for those cars, two thousand thirty-nine dollars and ninety cents. The train will be housed in a custom millwork by Kevin Pigford. Now Kevin was the project superintendent for the Depot renovation. The exhibit was designed to pay tribute to the nineteen thirties art deco Seaboard Bridge that crosses Highway thirty-eight here in Hamlet. There's a sister trestle similar to it, but it is going to be destroyed. It's in Apex, North Carolina, and they're getting ready to widen Highway fifty-five, so that trestle down there is really going to be rare for us, but we'll have that complete. Scenery construction is underway on the Model Railroad. It'll include signals, block signals, custom-built trestles, telephone poles, mil- mile markers, backdrop swamp scene. Water under the trestle will include boats, fishermen, Beaver Dam and beavers. The scene will have grass, bushes, cattails, real dirt and sand. The scene also honors a Depot, Depot Board Member Riley Watson. And it's done, we're doing this by featuring Riley's work game, building a second track in front of the Silver Meter. Other custom features include a Seaboard dragline crane, dump trucks, bulldozers, a pile driver, and more. The project, uh, cost as we put it together, the display was four thousand five hundred dollars. The diesel engine was seven hundred and fourteen, senior cons- senior, uh, scenery construction is six hundred. That's five thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-five cents. The next thing we're adding is two thousand thirty-nine eighty-five cost for the, for the cars. When we put it all together, we're short fifteen hundred dollars to finish this product and to refund our railroad budget. There's no labor cost to any of this. If I had to estimate the labor cost for six of us, it would be over six thousand dollars of the hours we spent. We would lo- add, love to ask you to participate with us. Fifteen hundred dollars will put us at our goal, uh... Nine hundred dollars extra would make us sing to the, to the, to the rafters, but thank you so much and for, for your time and for inviting us here.
Thank you so much, uh, you're another, you all are another one of those committees that's underappreciated, uh, underappreciated because you do so much that's done quietly down there, and I wish more people go down and look and see the things that you've accomplished, so thank you so much for your...
Will this be in the basement?
Can I, real quick, what was the, what's the total cost you all have spent so far? Yes, sir.
We have, at right now, five thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-five cents.
Okay.
Campbell Soup is, is, uh, it's very possible they're, they're planning on giving us fourteen hundred dollars of a, of a Campbell Soup employee that works with us, and they'll request again for his time spent.
Okay. Um, Mayor, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to grant them the fifteen hundred dollars to continue with this project 'cause this is certainly is something for the Depot. It's volunteer time that you guys have spent, a lot of your own money that you have spent, and, uh, we just had a project that we come in well under budget on, that I would like to possibly, uh, appropriate some of the money from that over to, uh, to assist with this project here.
How much is, how much is it that you feel like after everything else is fifteen hundred dollars is what you're gonna have left that you need? Okay, and, all right, what was your, your motion, was fifteen hundred?
Okay.
And I have a second on it. Is there any further discussion?
I thought...
Go ahead.
Didn't you say that you needed, wasn't there something else you said at the end?
Yeah, we, we, we were talking, Jim and I were just talking about, three, there's three cars that are not ever gonna be made again, and we've got a chance to pick them up, they're like three hundred dollars a car, and that'd be nine hundred dollars.
Now, I thought you said nine hundred. You wanna amend that?
Okay, um, we'll make the amendment for that to make it twenty-four hundred dollars, which will get those three additional cars.
Okay, have an amended motion. Uh, Mr. Lindsey, did you second on that? Any further discussion?
Thank you, guys.
If, if not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Thank you all so much for what you do. You got it.
Thank you.
Y'all keep things looking good down there, and you spend a lot of time, and graciously appreciate it.
And you probably underestimated the man hours.
You really have, yeah.
Y'all really do a great job down there.
And can you guys let us know when that's completed?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Awesome. Appreciate all y'all do down there.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all coming tonight. Do we have anyone else tonight that had comments for the, uh, council? If not, we'll close the comments section, and we will move along. Uh, the next item of business is public hearing number one, which is a rezoning of the Richmond Community College, which is enclosure one of our packets. And, uh, the council gave the planning board the authority to review the zoning for RCC and provide a recommendation for rezoning. The planning board met on August the twentieth and offered a recommendation to rezone the parcel to B-two general business. Public hearing has been advertised, first-class letters mailed to spr- surrounding property owners, and the land posted with rezoning. Now, um, at this time, I will open the, uh, public hearing on this piece of property, and if I'm correct, this is where they wanted to put in a small, uh, solar generator. Am I correct on that? Ms. Strickland, is that what this one's for?
The council actually approved the solar panel, uh, two months ago.
Right.
But at that time is when we realized that there were some issues with the zoning, so they will be doing other projects, and so that this will help with the future projects, uh, that's why we're requesting the rezoning.
That's right. Counsel, uh, what comments do you have on this at this time?
Long overdue.
Is there anyone in the audience that tonight has comments on this? If not, we will close the public hearing at this time. We'll move along to the consistency statement, which is item number two.
Motion to adopt consistency statement.
Have a motion to adopt consistency statement?
Y'all gonna be on one motion, the zoning and the consistency statement?
A second.
Are we, we're on the, we're on the consistency, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay, I thought we... Okay, counsel, uh, have a motion to, uh, approve the consistency statement, and, uh, I need a couple of answers on it. Uh, reason we need to, the reason that we are going to approve it is...
Reason to approve it?
Yep.
Is for the, it meets the, uh, city's, uh, new ordinances, what it's...
Bring that piece of property in the line of where it should be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Allowing, uh, solar panels, so...
Indicating, yeah.
And, yeah, we need to approve the rezoning as well, right?
Right. Okay, and, uh...
I got the motion.
Okay, so we got a motion to approve the consistency statement, and, uh, have, need a second?
A second.
Got a second? Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Re- uh, opposed likewise.
Go back up to, uh, six.
All right, we need to go back up to item number six on the zoning. And, uh, counsel, what are your wishes on that?
Motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Thank you. Okay, next item of business is item number eight. Back up and get colored up. Closure number four. Nope, we took care of that one. No, no, got it. All right, closure number three. All right, this is, uh, open at this time is a hearing to rezone six point two-one acre tract, the city of Hamlet, and, uh, the location on this, uh, Ms. Strickland is?
This is near our Public Works Department on Oakhurst, there at the corner of Oakhurst and Spear Street. It's a wooded area.
And our reason for rezoning it is?
It is currently zoned I-one. We have a telecommunications company that has contacted the city that would like to put a cell tower in place. The city's zoning ordinance does not allow for cell towers in I-one. So, uh, on the instructions of council, it went to the planning board, and they make a recommendation to zone it to I-two, which is heavy industry, which would permit the cell tower.
Has anyone here got any comments regarding that? Anyone on council got comments regarding it? If not, at this time, we'll close the, uh, public hearing. Okay, can we go ahead and have a vote to approve the zoning at this time?
Yes, sir, motion to approve the rezoning.
Consistency statement.
You gotta do it first.
This is...
We gotta go forwards and backwards.
Oh, goodness. All right, consistency statement. Is there an approval on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, okay. Need a second?
Second.
All right, have a second? Any further discussion? No further discussion. The reason for it is to be able to, uh, rezone it, if they can put in a cellphone tower. Uh, do I have a motion and a second on the, uh, consistency statement? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise. All right, let's go back to the zoning, and, uh, I need a motion.
Motion to approve the rezoning.
Motion to approve the rezoning. Uh, have, need a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Thank you. I think those consistency statements are just put in to aggravate counsel. Is that Mr. Morpheus doing?
No, sir, that's the last year of course.
Okay, at this time, we're opening the public hearing number three, zoning text amendment, which the city's tower ordinance was adopted in, uh, nineteen ninety-nine. Since that time, improvements have been made in the architectural structure of towers. The proposed cellular company has requested an amendment to the ordinance that will reduce the fall area. That's if the tower fell, how far it, uh, how much area around it had to be open. The planning board met on August the twentieth of two thousand eighteen and offered the text amendment found in enclosure five. Uh, the hearing is open at this time. Uh, Ms. Strickland, do you wish to make any comments?
Other than to say that our ordinance is, uh, quite outdated, and we did research other municipalities locally and, um, across the state, and have found that, provided it does have the language to where a certified architect would sign off on it, that, um, it is allowed in other municipalities to reduce the fall area.
I, I know that in this particular case, we, uh, this is property we're gonna be renting them. Is, am I correct on that? So the area is big enough that the tower probably wouldn't anyway, but it, if the towers are so high and they're gonna fall, it doesn't make any difference what kind of tower it is. Sooner or later, it's gonna fall. So I don't understand why they, why the ordinance has shrunk it, but that's neither here nor there.
Is the, uh, the only thing that, if it did fall, would be the city shop, right?
No, it won't even get close to that.
The way the tower is structured currently, the cell to- towers of that like self-collapse, they fall to the bottom.
I got you.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, that with architectural and engineering designs, that's how they are designed to fall. They're designed to self-collapse.
I just had to put that in.
All right.
Okay, if there's no further comments, uh, I'll close the public hearing on that and move to the consistency statement.
Motion to approve the consistency statement.
Okay, have a motion to approve the consistency statement. The, uh, updates to tower ordinance aligns with the ordinance for current design standards in municipalities.
Yeah, a second from Counsel Lindsey.
Okay, any further discussion on the, uh, consistency? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise. All right, now let's move back up to the, uh, um...
Motion to approve the text amendment.
Okay, motion to approve, need a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Counsel, you have before you tonight, uh, several, uh, applications for the, uh, planning and zoning board. Uh, if I am correct, uh, Ms. Strickland, one of them has to be from ETJ. Am I correct on that?
That's correct. You have one application in your packet that is marked for ETJ.
If you'll look at that, Ms. Whitley, who is in the ETJ, has applied. She's the only one from the ETJ. Now, we have one other opening, is that correct, and two applications?
Two.
Two openings.
Two additional openings.
Okay, so we've got applications that are right here are the total number that we can approve. All right, counsel?
I just have one question. I, I don't have a problem with anybody.
Yeah.
This Miss Stegall, has she been verified, 'cause this application's four years old?
Yes, when I realized about two months ago that I was gonna be in the need of someone, I contacted her at that time, and she said yes.
I'm moving to accept. All three.
Okay, I have a motion to accept all three?
Second.
Have a second? Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Thank you. Item number thirteen is discussion of the Jack Breeden Park updates and improvements. And, uh, Mr. Bowie has requested a discussion of the fencing and lighting to the park, so if you would, give us an update where we are on this project, how much we had appropriated, and how much we're gonna save.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, with the eighteen nineteen budget allocated sixty thousand dollars to repave the South Hamlet ballpark. That was after some informal conversations I had had in the spring with some local contracting companies and some neighboring municipalities that had tackled a similar project. After reaching out to a few other contractors, that has come in considerably less than that with, uh, the lowest, the lowest informal proposal that I have at twenty-four thousand dollars, four hundred, uh, twenty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that's quote, that quote's good for, um, for thirty days. And I believe Mr. Bowie had inquired a couple of weeks ago about lighting down there. I reached out to Duke Energy towards the end of last week, and they agreed to meet with me sometime this week, of course. This was prior to all the, the, um, preparations that have been made in regards to the hurricane. But they have agreed to come out and assess the cost of putting another light pole behind the fence towards the concession stand and look at a floodlight at that existing power pole on, uh, the side of the road there. So I'm gonna be meeting with, uh, Duke Energy hopefully this week or next, depending on, on the circumstances. I also reached out to, uh, fencing company that, uh, Public Works Director and I met with last week and to discuss putting a fence from where the current fence at the, uh, soccer field ends all the way down the right-of-way to the wooded area, and, uh, got a quote on that around the thirty-seven hundred dollar, uh, ballpark in order to prevent people from parking on the court once it's repaved to, uh, prevent any damage from there. So those are the two things that I've looked into, lighting and fencing, and some of the prices that we have, uh, thus far on the project.
That paving came in quite a bit less than what we expected. Just, just make sure we get a reputable company.
Sure.
Are we, are we just resurfacing what's there? Are we taking up?
They actually gave me two quotes. To resurface what was actually there was in the eight thousand dollar ballpark, but to completely redo, and the option that they, um, that they gave with this proposal is to, uh, demo existing asphalt and dispose of furnished install, uh, hot mix asphalt, hundred and sixty tons of that, and then strip the parking lot as discussed, and then clean up afterwards. So it's completely redoing the, the basketball court.
Broken up real bad. It was, it was broken up real bad. You couldn't have paved that one.
Right.
Um, new goals?
Mm-hmm, and that can be something that we can look into as well.
They gotta be thirty, forty years old.
The goals themselves, just the, uh, steel beams, I think are okay, but as far as backboards on it, uh, I think they would do well to be replaced. Or we can completely redo.
I'm sure that they've got single poles now or something. It might be a little bit, uh...
Sure.
But I, I mean, if you're gonna do that, it seem like to me the, the, the backboards would be a minor expense on the thing.
We're still gonna be way under.
Yeah.
That's great.
Or as the fencing, um... The lighting we're waiting on, but, uh, this time I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to get the fence approved.
Uh, the lighting, is this just a night light that...
Um, so, I person, I, I personally don't think we need lighting to be lit up all the time, but as far as the light he's talking about on the single pole in the back...
LED floods are down there. It looks reasonable on that.
Yeah, 'cause, um, a few of the neighbors and, uh, even a couple of the officers... Yeah, 'cause, um, a few of the neighbors and, uh, even a couple of the officers in that particular area, there's some burnout light bulbs down there. So, that whole section, and we've had our, um, concession stand broken into three or four times.
You, you're just making night light kinda?
Yeah. For that, yeah.
Just clarifying.
Light that wooded area up slash concession, concession stand area. But the other light, um, and we may have to look at, uh, one light to keep for just on all the time and then another light that will go in hand with the one across from it to light it up.
You also, I, I've got a couple LED, uh, floodlights at my house that, that, that do well. You don't have, uh, I had Duke and it was a reoccurring expense. And these, these were maybe a couple hundred dollars a piece, but you've got power at the concession stand. You might be able to possibly tap off of that and use your own power and, and possibly save some money down the road. But it, you know, I mean, you're welcome, you're welcome to come by my house at night and look at it. It, it, it does well.
That'd help, uh, that'd help the police department. That'd help the neighbors right there in that little section where it's wooded at. Um.
So, you're making a motion then to add the lighting and add the fence, is that correct?
Yeah, the motion's for the fence. The lighting we don't have a quote on, so I'm just making a motion to go ahead and approve the fence, being we've got the quote for that.
Okay, at some point down the road, if I'm correct, we're gonna have to make a budget adjustment on that, or is that still part of that project?
That would still be part of the South Hamlet, um, Parks and Rec line item.
While we're doing, looking at lights, can we get a price on, on some new back, uh?
Yeah.
Back pole.
Oh, poles and.
Yeah, just get all that.
Might as well do it, try to do it right.
Uh, we do need to go ahead and get that fence up soon as they get it paved, don't we?
Sure.
Right.
Alright, so I have a motion to, uh.
Before you make your motion, let me.
Yes, sir.
While we're talking about improvements and making things better down at South Park Hamlet, um, fixing the basketball goal would be great, the court and one thing or another, putting the fence up, almost got to have. But I would like to also add, um, uh, over in the park where we put some playground equipment, uh, I think we should have a shelter over there with a couple of picnic tables under there so that parents can have little parties for their children, birthday parties or whatever they wanna have. But they need someplace to get under some shelter for that purpose. And, uh, I would, uh, I would recommend that we, uh, add that to the improvements down there in addition to the lights and the courts, to put some picnic table, at least two, under a shelter, like a carport or something.
Like behind a convenience corner.
Behind convenience corner, same thing, just sort of have something where they can get under and prepare the food. Cause there's no shade there. There's no trees. There's nothing.
We get a quote on that, something similar to?
And if we, if we've got this recreation, we're talking about recreation, I, the, the tennis courts are, are, they got grass growing up in the cracks in the tennis courts. And the equipment, the old equipment at, um, Deputy James and a bill when, when the gentleman came, and I think Jonathan was here, the, the playground guy that we met with originally, he said that was, that equipment was near the end of its lifespan and it, and it is, cause I went up there the other day and.
I thought we had, I thought we had decided to take it up when we put the new equipment in, but I guess we didn't.
I don't know about, about that, but, but that, that equipment, just for planning purposes, is, is, some of the slide was starting to crack.
It hurt.
And, uh, and I didn't, it'd been a long time ago, there was a tennis court up there at one time and some basketball courts that, where, I guess where that was, um, and it had, uh, ran in an article and, and it had run its life course on the, the, the basketball courts and the tennis courts. And they must've just decided to put, um, playground equipment in there. But hopefully maybe some more of this money that if we, since we did so well can go into some other projects. But the, the tennis courts, Jonathan, weren't you playing tennis a while back?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's.
I, I'm gonna tell you, I'd honestly love to find us a place to put those tennis courts and make that a parking area. Cause right now it's slam packed over there during events. I mean, there's people parking across the street, uh, parking in dark areas on top of the hill. And it's just, you know, that's, that's a project we do need to sit down and look at.
And the, and the tennis courts were, were chained locked on Saturday when I went up there. I, I don't know.
Which side?
Street side.
Yeah, they normally are locked there. You go on the corner of the parking lot towards the gym and go in that way.
Okay.
Yeah, cause that door swings open.
Oh, well, that's why it was locked.
Um, the only thing I had, I know there was a motion on the, uh, fence, but when you said something about the new playground equipment down there, there is all the mulch. Well, the grass has taken over almost the whole area. That just needs to be cleaned up.
And this is at Memorial Park?
South Hamlet.
South Hamlet, okay.
At the new, new equipment.
And, and Deputy James and Memorial Park. All of them, all of them got some grass growing up.
In the mulch. And like I said, there's a lot of money spent down there.
That mulch is expensive.
Yeah. Um, but, uh, so the motion thirty-seven hundred dollars to go ahead and get the fence, being we have a price on that.
Yeah, and, uh, look at the, the lights in the, uh, building, just see what the price be for next month and, uh, we'll go from there on that. Alright, Mr.?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so I have a motion to go ahead and put the fence up down there as soon as it gets paved. I have a second.
Second.
I got a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Well, item number fourteen is approval of tax releases. Uh, what do you wish is on that, counsel?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Thank you. At this time, we'll move along to item number fifteen for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item that I want to bring to council's attention tonight is a request from Ms. Amy Fraley from Habitat for Humanity. They are working on a project out in Briarwood at one oh seven Curtis Avenue. They have reached out to the city to solicit some volunteers for a project that they're working on there. They typically work on Thursday, Friday and Saturday from eight AM to one PM and an afternoon shift on Saturday from twelve to five. If anyone is interested, um, would encourage them to reach out to City Hall or Steve Graham, Constant, uh, Marshall and others to see if there's a day that we can coordinate to work on that particular project. So, we'd certainly, uh, be glad to help them in any way that we can and wanted to pass along that message to council and the public tonight. Uh, secondly, today I spoke with Mr. Jerry Thomas of the ABC Board who brought in their annual audit and it showed that they net, uh, netted almost fifty-three thousand dollars in profits last year, which is an increase and which is an excellent refle- uh, reflection on that board and the, uh, amount of revenue coming in. Lacabanae has certainly helped and some changes there at the ABC store have certainly been beneficial and the city is certainly, certainly appreciative of all of, uh, their efforts.
What was the, uh, ABC Board year before last? Just remember right of hand?
The total.
Yeah. Cause we're fifty-three here, but.
Right.
I mean, just several years ago, it was like thirty-two, thirty-five. I mean, it's.
Right.
There's been a. Yeah, it's come a very long ways. That board needs to be truly like think, cause they've done a really good job of,
Mm-hmm.
um, bringing in the money down there.
Absolutely.
Whatever they're doing.
And, uh, one final thing, as a general ru- rule is I've been here for the past, uh, couple of years. I've not recognized individual employees. I've been blessed to have a, uh, a veteran staff of department heads that I've worked with over the past year. But, uh, I do wanna make an exception tonight. Uh, tomorrow, September twelfth, will be our Public Works Director's thirtieth anniversary with the city. After thirty consecutive years, uh, with the city, Mr. Stubbs has been with us. I certainly do appreciate his help and certainly appreciate his willingness to always tackle any project and there's been some exciting ones over the past year and a half. And I really appreciate Mr. Stubbs' effort and just wanted to, efforts and wanted to thank him for his longevity and to me as city manager and recognizing him on thirty consecutive years of service to the.
I wouldn't fall out of diapers when you start.
And that is all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, this time we'll move along with the, uh, comments of counsel. Mr. Lindsey?
Just wanna take, you, you did a moment of silence, but want everybody just to remember nine eleven, what it has done to us as, as, as a country and as individuals, cause this new generation hasn't felt that as much as we did when we were there. And it, it's, it, it hurt. It really did, but, um, you, m- m- Mr. Blanton, at one point a few weeks ago in an update, we had a request about chickens. Chickens have come up several times in the, the past couple of years. Uh, I think at some point we need to address it. Uh, I, I know that you were getting some, at one time I think we were getting some policies together from other towns.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I think there's people that have chickens, but we need, I, I feel like the council needs to address it at some point, just one way or another with their, uh.
Sure. And that's something that, um, we've been looking at recently and, um, in regards to a discussion on that. There'd be a lot of factors that I think council would need to consider, can, anything ranging from the number of chickens per square footage. Are we gonna require signed affidavits from adjourn, adjoining property owners as some cities do? Is it just gonna be chickens, ducks? So, that can be a discussion that we add to the, uh, agenda of council so wishes and I can bring some questions, because ordinance vary, vary greatly on, on livestock and city limits. So, if council wishes to add a discussion to that, we'll be glad to, be glad to look into that.
I think it'd be a good idea. Put on for a discussion.
Um, McDonald Avenue, I know it was passed to, to demolish. Uh, how many bids do we have? That seems, I mean, we, we're, we're boiling our whole, about our whole budget off of.
Right, we have, uh, four bids for that project, Mr. Lindsey. They ranged anywhere from thirty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars to seventeen thousand, six hundred, which was the lowest, uh, for the house. And then for the, uh, clearing of the lot beside it, it ranged anywhere from seventeen thousand to the lowest of four thousand, four hundred for that lot.
Is, is it because of the way it was worded for handling of, of the, uh, asbestos?
Yeah, those asbestos.
Right.
Cause I guess we clear out a normal house and they can just.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, Gail, but they have to treat it differently because it's been burned. They have to treat it as if everything has asbestos as that.
Um, according to the inspector, because it is burned, it was unsafe for him to go into the house to try to collect any samples. Normally you would go in, he would go in different rooms and he would, uh, take samples from the flooring and the ceilings, the walls, send those off. But because of the hazard of this, he was unable to go in it. So, uh, we have to treat it all as asbestos. So, that means it will have to be, um, handled differently than just putting it in the back of a dump truck and carrying it to Richmond County. In fact, it'll have to be carried to, uh, a certified, someone that does take asbestos. The closest one is, um, Polton. So, that does have added cost to it, even just transporting it there.
So, we need to let the fire department let it burn better next time, maybe? Um, and, and in the future, I didn't, I didn't know anything about, and, and again, it's been passed. I'm not trying to bring that up. But in the future, could we get a little earlier warning on what y'all are working on for this type of thing, so?
Sure, and.
We have even discussed letting council make the decision of what property we take down next.
Okay, that's it.
Mr. McQueen?
Um, just following up that ultimately the council does make the decision on who, on what houses gets, you know, taken down. I don't know that the council would have the experience and the, the wherewithal to go up there and, and, and try to do an employee's job. So, I mean, I for one wouldn't want this group to take the lead on what's gonna be tore down or what's not gonna be tore down. Um, I think that's what y'all need to do. Um, and if it's more time, just give us more time. But, I mean, that's, that's my opinion on that. Um, so, um, what plans or preparations do we have in place? Just so the people that might be watching or maybe in the news, um, for the preparedness for the hurricane.
Absolutely. We held a meeting, uh, yesterday morning, the fire department, with myself, the fire chief, police chief, public works director, uh, several officers and several key, um, fire department personnels. We discussed ensuring that all of our vehicles are of course gassed up, having some extra gasoline and diesel on hand just in case, uh, it is needed and being as proactive as we possibly can to ensure that we plan for the, uh, plan for the worst but hope for the, hope for the best over the next few days. We have been doing, uh, some preventive maintenance, looking at some storm drains, some limbs that have been brought to our attention to be looked at throughout the city to minimize the damage as much as possible. But we are going to, again, hope for the best and brace the storm when and if it gets here.
Awesome. I, I appreciate that. I, I'm pretty sure that that had occurred. I, I will say this, asked experience dealing with things like this with the city, I mean, I don't, I'd put these guys up against any departments in the state, um, for the job that they do, public works, police department, fire department. Um, those guys put everything they got into it. And I think everyone in the town needs to keep them in the prayers as they go through that, because they're the ones gonna be out dealing with the, the issues. Um, we're inland a right good bit, but, I mean, these guys right here can tell you that, I mean, it doesn't take much to cause havoc here. So, I, I do appreciate all that y'all do to keep the city running smoothly. Um, Seaboard Festival's coming up. The committee's, um, working really hard. There's a couple of extra spaces that's available. Um, if you have any idea, any inclination you wanna do that, um, get up with, uh, Chuck Cobb. Um, I guess could they call here and you have his information?
Sure, they can call here.
Um, that, that seems to be going, uh, really well. Um, other than that, I mean, I'll echo what everyone else has said about September eleventh. Um, that was a day that I don't think anybody will ever forget that was here. Like Council Lindsey said, there's a lot of people that were not around during that time. And, um, I can remember after it happened, the, the community spirit and outreach, and I mean, churches were open, prayer services, people go in and, and, you know, put the flags out. And it seems like, I thought during that time, that, that would never go away and boy, did it go away. So, I mean, it is nice to know that there are people that still care about what happened and remember it and that's all I gotta say.
Okay. Ms. Maskey? Okay, Mr. Martin?
I don't have anything this time.
Thank you. Mr. Bowie?
Um, the only thing I have is, is just, uh, the biggest thing is ensuring, you know, citizens and all know that with the storm coming up, fire department, police department's gonna be swamped with calls. If you do not need to be out, please don't go out, um, storm chasing or anything. Just try to stay indoors unless you have to, so we don't cause the police department, fire department to have to step away from other emergency matters to go handle someone out riding around in the storm and getting in wrecks. And so, just stay indoors if you can. I know some people can't. Some people are still gonna have to go to work. But if it gets bad, just stay home. Um, the other thing I had, uh, Gail, where there may be some concerns or issues with, uh, being this house is gonna cost a little bit more than our normal cost due to the asbestos that it's gonna cause a little bit of funds issue with tearing down, uh, another property for our fiscal year.
Well, if we look at the bids that we received for the house and also for the two lots, uh, total combined is twenty-two thousand dollars. Our budget is twenty-five thousand, so.
Okay.
No way to get anything down for, uh, you know, three thousand dollars. But if council would want to consider, uh, and I know that was discussed at the planning meeting, that we would, uh, allow twenty-five thousand to begin with and then maybe put some more in later. But rather than giving them out tonight, maybe we could decide on a house, get the bid for it to see exactly how much we need and then bring that back and ask for a budget amendment at that time.
And that's what I was gonna ask, is if the next property we'll look at it and, and just go ahead and have council aware of, you know, we may need to make a budget amendment so we can continue with the.
We won't get anything for three thousand dollars.
No, uh-uh. Um, that way we can keep, keep rolling with what we're doing, cause I know that one cost more for us. Other than that's, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, we just want everyone to be safe over this storm. It's, uh, it's not looking real good. It's, it's looking like we're gonna probably get a lot of rain and a lot of wind out of it. If we don't, bless the Lord that we didn't get it. But, uh, today I had, along with the police department and, uh, fire, had a meeting with the folks over at emergency management. Got a lot of things together. We understand what they're doing, what they're gonna offer to us as far as help and what we're gonna do from our part. Also, uh, the county has recommended, well, the county will be declaring a state of emergency for Richmond County at twelve noon tomorrow, uh, which is, uh, September the twelfth. And they have requested that we do the same, so we will declare a state of emergency at twelve noon tomorrow. What this'll do is, this will open us up to FEMA funds and reimbursement for, uh, everything that we have to do and use during the storm. So, this is gonna be, this is a benefit for us. Uh, please, if you've got. Uh, please, if you've got concerns while it's raining hard and the wind's blowing, if it's not an emergency, just call in, leave the information, but we may not be there right away if it's not an emergency because we don't want to endanger our employees. This was one of the things we talked about at the emergency management meeting today. When it's really, really bad, unless it's an emergency, we don't want our people and our apparatus out there on the, uh, on these streets where trees are falling, and if it's an emergency, have no fear, somebody will be there. But, um, we've also got plans, uh, we have lists of, uh, people that they want to look after, so they know on this list who they got to look after and who they got to check on. So that, that's really good planning and I feel like the city handled it as well planned. We've had, uh, enough experience when we had, uh, Matthew come through and Billy and his crew, it's, they have just worked themselves to the bone and we appreciate that. But we do need to appreciate all of our city employees that keep us going.
Mayor, I have one more thing, this was left in my box, so I'm assuming it was meant for me to share, um, Robin Roberts, who's with the VFW Post forty-two oh three, she's the president. Um, they're having the annual VFW auxiliary post parade Saturday, November tenth. I know that's early, but, uh, the purpose of her sending this is to be in Uptown Rockingham. They've done it the past two years and, uh, they want to extend the invitation to anyone in the community, um, city, whoever would like to, uh, celebrate, be in the parade with a patriotic, uh, float. Uh, the parade will line up at one and the parking lot of the Department of Social Services in Rockingham starts at three PM and ends, uh, when the floats return to the Department of Social Services, so anyone's, uh, wanting to take part in that, just a heads up on it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I have a question.
Okay, go right here.
The power, did you hear while the power went out, variety?
I didn't hear anything other than.
That crazy substation, I guess, I mean, it went all the way to Rockingham.
I believe the paper said fifty-two hundred people were without, in, in this reading.
Does anyone else have anything? If not, we'll move along to item number eighteen. Need a motion to go into closed session for General Statute one forty-three, eighteen, eleven, A three for attorney-client privilege.
Motion.
I have a motion?
Okay.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed likewise.
It moves.
We are at this time back in open session, we did not vote on anything that, uh, was of any, of any interest, there were no votes taken. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, make a motion.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. We stand adjourned.